We'll call the workshop to order. First item on the agenda, department updates, water and sewer plant.
Hello.
Hi Travis.
How's everyone doing?
Good.
All right, um, I guess we can start with water. I've been working with Light Plant, just kind of finishing, I think we're down to like 12 meters in town that need changed between businesses and like a couple homes, two or three homes is all we're down to, did really good the last couple weeks, so that's pretty well wrapped up, I would say.
Are they in the $50 deal range now if they haven't got it changed?
Um.
These would not be because they've been trying to work with us, it's primarily those that are waiting for plumbers if I'm not mistaken.
We really don't have any refusals left, so we're away from all the $50 fees and stuff like that, it's
That's good news.
Some business, I gotta have plumbers work and get all the meters installed in city buildings as well, we've gotten a list with that, so we're gonna work with a local plumber to get that finished up, and then meter project should be, should be wrapped up completely, so that'll be nice. The new generator that was in the CIP, I found out that that's gonna be here in June, so that'll be going on the Northwest well. We're gonna coordinate that with our water tower maintenance program. The tower here at the courthouse has to be shut down for a pretty significant amount of time for its rehab, and when that water tower shuts down, it actually shuts that wellhouse down, that's the only one on the generator currently, so as soon as we get the other generator installed, we can start the water tower project. So that'll go with that water tower, and then they're also rehabbing the inside of the one at the city shop. Far as sewer goes, we got the new upgrade in two weeks ago, so uh, all the computer stuff and the lift stations all redone, it's, we got away from that modicon cards that we can no longer get, so that's good to have that done, that just leaves a few buildings out at the plant, but that also gave extra spares, I took the cards that were in the lift stations, now we have them as backups, so it gave us about 10 extra cards for backups in case something goes wrong there. Our slip lining project this year, we were able to get, we found the information from 2019, 2020, um, the lines that did not get slip lined that were in need of repair, and actually with the budget that we had this year, we were able to get all those taken care of, and we're gonna get, um, almost everything from the 2021 Camry. Ends up being about 4,600 feet, like I said, that was all within what we had budgeted this year, so that'd be nice to get that caught up and one less thing to hopefully go wrong. Waste water plant, still working with Strand and the nutrient strategy, I would think we're gonna be having another meeting with them here fairly soon about that, and that should kind of give a more idea of what it's gonna cost to do a plant, and how soon they think they're gonna want, or what they suggest to do, so kinda interested to see what they have to say. And then, also working with Shive Hadry on the treatment agreements for, uh, businesses, we're getting that real close to getting wrapped up and getting all the getting all their agreements so they're uniform and everyone's, they all look the same and updated, so happy with where that's going as well. Anyone have anything for me while I'm here?
How about the lift stations, is that all done?
The lift station's done. Yes, that's done, as far as the electronics and two VFDs. There's gonna be one more part that we're going to add to it, it'll be a complete renovation, we're gonna coordinate that in the fall when they pull the pumps to work on their yearly service plan.
If they're doing the inside of the one up the city shop, and then they're gonna do the one at First Ward Park, are we relying on the MHI one then, or?
No, they won't be shut down at the same time.
Okay.
You'll still have two towers.
The one up at the city shop, I believe it's the inside of the structure but not the tank.
It's interior dry.
Right.
Is that one, the way it's set up, it has, uh, the outside dry coat, that, they say dry because the inside of the tank would be the wet, the water's touching, and then inside that, there's actually another structure that has dry piece that the paint's peeling off and everything, well, that they need to renovate that to prevent it from rusting out and all that stuff, so.
But that water won't be shut down at any point while they're doing that at the shop?
It will be to repaint it.
On the dry portion?
I can double check that, but I'm almost sure, because I don't think they can paint it with, with the condensation.
Gotcha. But they're not doing the inside of the tank, Mike, so that tank is staying in place, it's just the dry.
Like I said, it's all getting coordinated, so they're not shut off at the same time, and then we have that second generator being put in, so there's not ever gonna be concern of having a wall without power, so if there is, it'd be a real bad deal, so.
I do have a question regarding water pressure. What amount of water pressure do the houses, do we as a city need to provide each individual house? And how do we determine that?
I have to look, it's mid 30s to low 40.
And then, what happens if it's low, and how would people find out?
Yeah, they can call, and I can, we have a pressure gauge, and we can hook onto the each individual house, and turn like your water spigot on to see what they have for pressure.
Okay, and if it's low, what happens?
We'd have to figure out how to provide enough pressure, I know that you're talking about the northeast side, I'm sure.
Yes, yes.
It's been like that for quite a long time, I've heard. Um, I know it's been tested, and it's always been within the adequate pressure, I mean, I don't
Has it?
It's not as ideal as other areas in town, but in order to, if that becomes reoccurring issue, they need to look forward, and I mean, you're probably talking another, you're gonna have to either adjust how we run our water towers here, or possibly add another tower on that side of town, so I mean, it's it'd be a pretty significant project to try and do, but if there's concerns, they can just get ahold, I mean, we can go out there and verify the pressure to see if it has dropped over years for some reason, just to make sure it's still okay.
Okay.
I might ask, when you ask questions and give answers, talk closer to the mic, because I'm sure nobody at home caught any of that, because I barely did.
And I can repeat that, the question was about low water pressure, and what the, the policy, and they probably heard you, I was sitting back, and I apologize. So the question was about the low water pressure on the northeast side of Independence.
Yeah, and in case anybody on TV didn't hear, I mean, it's pretty, if you have an issue with that, you can call, and we are able to test every individual house to see if there's adequate pressure at the house. And we can test the fire hydrants and our water mains to make sure there's pressure on the mains as well, because sometimes in the houses, there are internal issues, water softener, et cetera, that's causing their low pressure.
And you do have to be careful if you do.
So, the biggest test to make sure the city's providing adequate pressure would be actually putting a pressure gauge on the fire hydrant, and that shows that our water main is full of pressure. And if there's a significant drop from the house, there's probably an internal issue there. A water filter that needs change, there's, we've ran into valves that have gotten three quarters of the way shut off, so little kids down there, something like that, so there's, we're always happy to go help and investigate it, so just need to get ahold of us.
Okay, I will pass that on, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions for Travis?
How are we doing on broken water mains? Or water main leaks?
Well, now that you talked about it, that's gonna be your fault, we did just have one last week, but that that was in a terrace, so there was actually no concrete torn up or anything, which makes them a little simpler to deal with, but I wouldn't say there's any more than normal, or.
Okay. Well, hopefully we're out of that mess.
Thanks Travis.
Yep, thank you guys.
Thanks Travis. I am gonna sneak out, I'm off to a Easter hat parade.
Oh, those are fun.
Good luck with the one you built. Good luck with the hat that you put together.
Don't we all? Or haven't we all?
Yeah, alright, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, airport is next.
Good evening, how's everybody?
Hey Brett. You have to talk at least that long.
Well, let's get started. I did put my report on there, you guys see that? That's pretty basic, every month that we submit to the airport board so they can see it. Kind of the general idea of what's going on, but big ticket items. Uh, the Young Eagles are hoping to do an event out there this weekend, to get some young people involved, so we look forward to that taking place. And then, um, off to it, IPA conference next week to meet with some of the FAA people and see some of the new rules and regulations and things that are going on, and other than that, in that report, um, that's about it.
Perfect, I'm out of time.
Did I run out?
What, how bad was the other more that we got rid of, was that?
So that was prior me, but, um, just looking at it, you know, when I got here, there's wheels on the front that are mounted on brackets, and the beating over time has just caused those to crack and essentially break. So they've taken it in, I do believe a couple times to have it re-done and rewelded, but you know, when you weld something like that, it either cracks in that same spot, or it moved it forward or back.
Sure.
So, I think it's seen its better time of the acres out there, so it was time to update, but hopefully, hopefully next week we hear something on that.
I've had two people call me, and one are interested in growing hay between the runways.
You wouldn't be the only one we've, yeah, I mean, there's been a lot of people trying to entertain that idea.
So I was just gonna.
So we're not allowed to grow crops within a certain, uh, distance of the taxiway or runway? And I can't remember what that footage is offhand, but our crop acreage is as close as we're going to get.
They checked with the FAA though, and they showed me the documentation, the one guy did, we, there is potential for more.
Well, I've got the official FAA document saying non-agricultural zone, and unless the federal FAA says we can encroach on that, which they've never shown me, um, it is absolutely not, that, that grass or vegetation, I'll be careful, the vegetation in and around the runways has to be kept at a very specific height, which is shorter than most of your hay would be. But they're not allowed to do agricultural operations in there, which means that they can't cut the hay and bale the hay and, and what have you as well. And this has been going on, this conversation has been going on for
Six years now we've looked at this.
Right. And, and the state FAA department through the DOT seems to have a little different view, but the federal FAA out of Kansas City has never wavered on look at your map, look at your zone, and, and if it's outside of that, absolutely, if it's inside of that, you can't do it. So, again, we've been over that several times, and, and, uh, if there's a way to do it, I'm, I'm good with it, but I've never seen the written documentation that says, yes, you can, from the federal FAA. Just, just to put everybody in the same boat there. If we can do it, I, I don't have a problem, but I've never seen that waiver.
Sure.
Maybe they could forward that information to us.
That would be very helpful.
Okay, anything else? Um, one question, clarification, on our apron expansion plan, we got the community, what, is that something that's come out of COVID, or where did that funding come from?
Congresswoman Hinson was, uh, had requested projects, and we submitted that because it's a project that's hanging out there, uh, for the apron expansion area north of the terminal building. We had it out there in case there was stimulus money, if we go back a few years, and said if they ever come up with this stimulus money again, we want a project that is ready to go, shovel ready. And, uh, this one pretty much is at that point, we have enough planning into it so we could submit it, we knew the dollar amount, what it looked like, what it would include. Hinson's, uh, office was very excited about it, they promoted it, they pushed it forward. We were included in one of the 10 for her congressional district, and then that went obviously into the whole mix. Well, it stayed in there all the way through the process until it was signed. And so now we have a million dollars of a million, a 1.1 million dollar estimated project to do that north expansion, uh, apron expansion. So I, I don't think it was specific COVID money, I think it was a, an infrastructure.
She voted against the COVID stuff.
Right, this is, this is a separate infrastructure funding package, uh, that was out there, and we were fortunate enough to stay in it.
Okay, so it's not a, probably wouldn't be an ongoing every year funding source?
We did get a request for additional projects, um, in her district that are due April 15th. You know, at this point, I don't know that we want to jump in there quite this quickly, I think we've got our plate full with the projects that we have between uh, the ones that are out there currently funded and that we have on the books, so. I don't know how, it's, last year was the first year we were asked for it. Will it happen every year? I, I don't want to say it will, because it's fairly new, uh, experience for us. But we'll keep chasing that as we, uh, move down the road here.
Somebody had asked me, and I couldn't quite put my, I was thinking it was when Hinson was out here this summer, but I
Same one.
Couldn't put all the. Okay, thank you.
I wanted to point out, Brett took it upon himself, in his report, he talked about replacing the tiles. There's a back hallway that very few people see, uh, the tiles were bad in there, and I wanted to thank him publicly for the work he did. He went out, bought the tiles and did the work himself, and, uh, that's the kind of thing that we appreciate out there, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that the back stairwell?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, I, I do believe that's where that water damage and some of that stuff was, so I'm alluding that some of that was from that, it's just over time, it ate the glue and stuff away, so.
Okay, thank you Brett. Okay, Todd. Now for you Todd, you can only talk that long.
And I'm spent, alright. How are you guys doing?
Good.
And you?
Good. So I sent you the thing this morning, I don't know if you guys got a chance to look through it. Before I get started though, any like addresses or specific places, we'll not talk about it here, just talk to me about it after, I just don't want to oust anybody. Um, it kind of just shows what I've been working on, big picture things. Um, you guys have all that information, the stuff that I'm working on right now. So, as you know, this is about the time where the permits start coming in, and so it's, it's pretty steady stream right now, and with that comes the inspections, um, we also have some new commercial development. Storage units, we got going in on Iowa, we also have them going in on Enterprise Court. Uh, we're gonna have a gymnastics studio here, um, out on Iowa Avenue, and Dollar General is also talking about moving from where they are now to in between Fairway and Norbees. Um, residential, G is still on a roll, he's got three of them going right now. Um, Oll has plenty of places that he's also working on, and Steve Bitterman uh, is also working on quite a few places, so uh, not only new construction, but also remodels as well, and that includes the, the new eye care clinic, so. And with that, speaking of Oll, so now we got houses going back on lots where places have been demoed. So one of the houses, the big blue house we all know about that was demoed, um, that's gonna be, we're gonna have a house on there soon. Another one right over by the light plant, that's already got one on it, and it's sale pending. We got a lot of eyesores that are turning into, you know, taxable property. Cat program, we're on a roll, you saw the numbers, and, uh, this is just an update, so there's been like six more since the last time I updated it, it's insane. Uh, but right now, I'm kind of holding off as far as this is when they start having their babies, so I gotta make sure if I take it out to Pipestone and it is pregnant, or if it's, uh, if she could tell that it's nursing, then I'll take it right back, because once you spay them, then they're not gonna reproduce milk, so I, or produce milk, so I just want to make sure that that's very inhumane, so we want to do it the right way. Uh, Dick Newton and I actually worked together on a liquor license checklist, and, uh, I'll actually send this to you guys. Just an easy, easy sheet, so I can, I, and I could take any, I could, Roger and I can go out, and he knows exactly what we're looking for through this checklist, it's all through international fire code that you guys adopted over the years. So it's basically a simple checklist that we can give to the people and say, these are what we're gonna be looking for every year. And so that way, there's nothing that's, they're like, hey, we didn't know about that, so. Um, let's see, I'm gonna be joining, um, Mr. Kurtz on a WOBSY watershed meeting. Got a few ideas that I have up my sleeve that I'd like to talk about. Um, and with that, with the CRS process, um, you probably saw that I was asked to be a panelist for the Iowa Stormwater Association. So I have a, um, I got a Zoom session tomorrow, and then we do like three practice sessions, and then it's a, a paneling. Uh, tomorrow morning, we have a planning zoning meeting, and we'll be talking about First Street West revitalization, as well as the zoning around town. Um, and then we're going to a planning zoning workshop, uh, you guys probably saw, I know Deb, you saw that it got changed from the 7th to the 14th. Uh, I encourage anybody to go, it's great to I mean, especially with, it tells you a little bit about variances and stuff that, the do's and don'ts of this. And then I also attended a time management seminar with, um, with Brett and Bob, but unfortunately, we were a little late, because we were waiting for Bob. Sorry Bob. And then right now, right now, we're actually, uh, working
Came in like a minute before you.
I know, yeah.
I was probably late too.
Right now, we're working on the sidewalk replacements, uh, this is stuff that should have been done last year, uh, with the timing. Uh, wards one and five would have been done in November, uh, they're actually up and running, we have them marked now. Uh, wards two, three, and four will be getting a certified letter, giving them a due date, and then after that time, those will be taken care of as well. Really excited for the facades, that's what I'm pumped most about in the next couple of years, and the downtown revitalization, so.
Question on the facades, I've had a couple people, do we know when they may be starting to work on some of the buildings?
I have not heard exactly, it's basically like any of those, um, they have an end date, and that's kind of what they, they look for, I think Crawford could probably vouch for that, that, that's usually what they're looking for is yeah, we have an end date, so we'll get there. But it's gonna be, I want to get some really good before and after pictures, I have, uh, pictures of all the the schematics of what they look like, but I want to go from downtown, I thought, I thought a new, or a really cool idea would be have a picture of what they look like now, and then after they're renovated, have that in the, the window, just to see like, okay, this is drastic. Alright, other than that, uh, do you guys have any questions for me?
I just have one on my list, did you happen to get ahold of Mr. Oll regarding the dumpster issue with the banging dumpster?
Yep, yep, I already talked to them the other day, and I also talked to the daughter as well, so.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yep.
Got a question, um, would it be now to bring it up about a couple of properties that I'm concerned about that might be nuisance things, or should I bring that up with Todd separately?
Yeah, let's do it separate, that way we can get, I can get addresses and names and anything like that, if you guys ever have anything like that, I'll gladly share it with you privately, but.
Okay.
So.
Todd, I don't know if you want to, or, but I, you shared the letter from the lady on the, the dog, and I I think that shows you going above and beyond her thankfulness. If you want to maybe share the gist of it?
Yeah, so a while back, there was a gal that, um, she's at McDonald's, and they're from out of state, they, her dog ended up jumping out, and uh, fire department, police looked for a while. I ended up finding the dog about a month ago, um, still had its little hoodie on, and it's, yeah. So, me being an animal lover, I have three dogs and three cats, I took care of it, I ended up finding out, because I knew there was something on Facebook, I found the daughter-in-law and talked to her. Basically got the dog prepared, took the, took the collar off, washed it up, and then just put that in a little box with my card, just saying, you know, sorry, because it's, he was gonna send it back to the mother-in-law. And then, uh, the mother-in-law actually got it and sent back a very nice letter, so. I might share that, it's yeah, it made my week, that's for sure.
Well, thank you, that, you went above and beyond on that one.
Alright.
It's a good story, good outcomes.
Uh-oh. What's next, streets? Okay, streets. I'm not even gonna put pressure on you Brett.
No pressure. Well, uh, we're gonna start doing our crack and grinding seal program, and, uh, then we're gonna take care of the water main and sewer main breaks over the winter. And we're going to do some storm water intake repair, and we're also gonna work this year with the storm sewer guys on their new vac machine, so we're gonna suck some of them out and maybe do some rehab to them. And working with Light Power, removing the dead ash trees that are all over the place, and we, uh, took care of Liberty Trail on the dead ash trees that we could see before the construction.
Yeah, that looks nice.
Yeah, it's hard to see what all's dead, but we think we got the, most of the ash trees that are gonna die if they're not dead. And we do a lot of teaming up with Parking Rec, yeah. Something different all the time with them guys, and they're purchasing a stump grinder, and we're going to use our skid loader, their machine, and take care of some of the stumps, not that we still won't contract out the stumps, but and the street sweeper's out and running when it isn't too sloppy to pick up, so that's what's up and coming.
Brad, on the stump grinding for the trees they cut down last fall for residents, when will they start coming around for those, do you know?
I talked to Craig Maroney today, and he's, he's started here and there, but just like he said, the mud holes that you make, it's all a weather, you know, it dries up a little bit, he's he's itching and ready to go, it's just you, it's just you can't do it sometimes, and wet weather is not kind of in forecast here and there.
I can understand.
Or it's snowing, or.
Okay, alright, anyone else?
I wanted to commend Brad, I thought that he and the street crew moved five inches of snow in record time this weekend, so thank you.
Can't even tell it was here.
It was amazing.
Yeah. I get along well with Mother Nature.
Thank you Brad.
Alright, thanks Brad.
Thanks Brad.
We didn't know that he had an in with a higher calling there. You know, you had a higher calling that helped you move that snow. Okay, uh, next, uh, council business, so some discussion here. Uh, we do appreciate all the department heads coming in, this is kind of a new thing for us, and, uh, we're gonna try to rotate department heads, so all the council members get a chance to ask questions and be on the same page, so I think that's gonna work. Uh, next item here is, uh, some discussion on council committee structure policy, and I don't know, Al, if you wanted to kick this off, or?
I will, uh, the first attachment that you have there is our adopted by resolution, council committee structure responsibilities, operational guidelines. You'll find that, you know, we had a conversation at the last council meeting about the ordinance. Well, the ordinance is redundant in that we already have this policy also in place. If we are going to, uh, eliminate the committees structure as we have it, this, this, uh, policy will also have to be addressed. This is a simple resolution to, uh, rescind the original resolution that adopted this back in, I think this goes back to 2014 and re-initiated in 2018? So, I wanted to put it out there so you see what it is, I think there's good information in there above and beyond what the policy for committees are, but, uh, discussing the policy versus administrative responsibilities. But then we, like I said, the policy for each committee, we do have to address. We do have the council committee meeting protocols, I think they're good, that can stay, uh, if you so wish. But we have to address this discussion with policies. And, and it is separate from the ordinance that we're currently discussing.
So, Article 1, 2, and 3, and 4, those are all part of an ordinance?
Uh, they are all referenced in the ordinance that we brought to you to rescind, yes. In that, the ordinance says that the council shall have committees, and it structures the fact that the council committees are, and it goes through that process. This policy takes that the council committees are, and it goes through that process. This policy takes that ordinance a step further and says, okay, our policy is to have a council committee for public works, government performance, finance, et cetera.
But for example, the policy and administration explanations under Article two, that's part of our ordinance?
No, no. That's what I'm saying is this is just a good discussion on the difference between policy and administrative responsibilities.
I was going to say, I didn't think.
No, it's not in...not all of this is in the ordinance, but the ordinance and this particular policy are redundant for the council, and...
So, we have both in place right now?
They're both in place currently.
A little background-
One is accurate to what we want and one is not.
No.
No.
The council's direction to eliminate the committees, we would also have to...I mean, we're repealing the ordinance. Then we come back to this policy, and Mike had brought up wanting to amend a council committee policy. This would probably be a starting point for that. But this is just a policy that the council can adopt, modify, do what you want with. You know, we can...
This is the scene.
Little background on this. We did this when Carl Scharf was mayor. At the time when Carl first became mayor, we didn't have council involvement in anything. I mean, basically, you came to the council meeting, you opened your packet, there was whatever, and you voted yes or no, and that was the extent. And Carl and I sat down and said, that's...the council needs to be involved, and since they had never been involved, we probably did a much more detailed description of what the councils did and what the council's authority was and the city manager, because at that time, it was like total new territory, and we wanted to make sure everybody was on the same page. I think we've moved past that point where the council is very involved, and so, as Al said, this is a kind of a policy, just an information, but we probably don't need that now, and that's why we put some very scaled back. I think, Mike, your question was, how do we...if we need a committee outside of this committee of the whole, how do we go about that? And that's where the Clear Lake and Shenandoah, they just...they kind of basically are saying the council decides when they want an ad hoc committee. One gets put together. The council decides if they like the makeup of the committee, and then that committee does whatever the council asks them to do and comes back with a report. So, it...those are way scaled back to the point where when we need something besides what all seven of us sitting here in an hour, hour and a half can do, those are possibilities. You know, and that's the starting point.
Well, ultimately, the bottom line is the council has the decision-making power of that.
Yeah.
My concern was that there have been times since I've been on the council where we were not well informed. In fact, a small group of people might have been informed, and the rest of us weren't, and the result was, in one case, a huge legal bill because of some problems, and another one, a payout because of problems that were not...that nobody else was aware of, and suddenly we're asked to vote on like a $15,000 bill. So, that was my purpose here.
Well, and part of that, and I think, you know, you can see some of it in this. When it comes to city personnel matters, the council does not have the ability to just step in and have that information. Now, some think they do, but I talked with people at the Iowa League of Cities. I've talked with our city attorneys. That would be no different than a...
I'd like that opinion.
That would be no different than somebody coming out to MHI and saying, I want to see Bob Hill's personnel file because I heard he's got a problem. No, that would not happen.
I want to hear that from Mark. Legal advice from Mark.
Yeah, and that's so...I mean, that's where, to a certain degree, some of those things get handled. You get a general report, but just because you're a city council member doesn't mean you have access to every nook and cranny of the investigation or the discussion.
During my tenure, we've had some personnel issues that have been costly and have been problematic, and so that's another reason why. And I think you're wrong, Bob, but the legal people will, you know, set the record straight.
So, if you would send me an email clarifying exactly what you want the legal opinion addressing, we can get that for you. But I want to make sure that we're clear-
Otherwise, I can email Steve and do that.
You can email Steve, or we can include all of the council and what the opinion that we're requesting is, yes.
It was kind of interesting going through, and I sent...some of you may have seen it, some not. I've been going through our website, and there's an interesting little tab that's almost impossible to find. It's under Agenda, and to the right at the top says Policies. And I'm not quite sure how, and we made that up. That got stuck there because you don't really...but anyway, that's neither here nor there, and something I wanted to mention, maybe we can get that moved to a more conspicuous. But there is in that tab a procedure for citizens if they have a complaint that they can fill out, and it has some specific information that we're requesting so that then city staff, city manager can deal with. And as I read through that, and again, it's not for tonight's discussion, but it's not all that bad if the council has that, because sometimes we get to talking about something we don't care for, and we don't really know what we're...and what I'm saying is that page where we fill out what we don't think is being done right and what we're basing that on would be nice then to have as our discussion point rather than if we're just saying it verbally. Sometimes then we all get in our defensive postures, and we don't get very far with it. And so something to think about is maybe when the council has a concern about how something is being done or, you know, that type of thing, we could use a form like that to get the committee of the whole involved and give the city staff some time to come back with an answer, because sometimes there are complicated issues that...anyway, I think that would deal with some of what you're talking about there, too, that it doesn't...sometimes we think we're saying what we want. Who hears it verbally thinks they think you hear what you want, and in turn, we end up not getting an answer. And so, I think that's something-
What I'm saying is, by these small ad hoc committees, we lose the rest, the other four or five, whatever's on the committee, lose perspective on what...how the problem is being addressed, what the problem is, how it's being addressed, and how other potentials. That's what I'm saying, and that's why the committee structure was problematic, and that's why we had expensive problems that took place.
Right. And what we're trying to answer here is, okay, 90%, probably 99% of everything, we can...staff can come to us with the information, and we can talk about it. But there's going to be times, for example, the police station situation. I mean, there was a group that probably about six to eight people that spent probably four or five months, meeting a couple of times a week, looking at locations, things. That's unrealistic to expect if the council members to be that active in that study. What we're trying to do here now is if we're not going to have any small committees, which would have normally been the ones that took that over, how do we then have set up ad hoc committees if we get an issue that needs to go farther than what we can do in an hour, an hour and a half? I'll give you an example. Would all of the council members have liked to been on Mayor Davis's code review board? They met for practically a year, going through every code in our...would that have been beneficial to have all seven council members sit there?
Would there be council members on that?
But would all of them?
No.
Council was not...council members were aware of it, but they were not sitting on there. We met once a month or, I think it was once a month, for about three hours a night for...and I think it was about a year and a half, actually, to go through every single ordinance. And we used the citizen format. We took the public input on that. We had the police department involved, obviously, and the fire department where it was relevant, the building department where it was relevant, but went through each piece of that. I don't know that anybody was excluded from it, but that was the mayor's goal, is to go through before we recodified on that particular case. For the sake of the conversation here, the code that...city code that's addressed here is council committees specifically. Counsel shall confirm...it says, confirm mayor's appointment of city council committee members. The city council shall govern and enforce the cities of independence, city council committee structure, responsibilities, and operational guidelines. The recommendation is to take that out because there was concern about the mayor's appointment of committee members. The request that we heard was do away with the committees and have the council govern as a committee of the whole. That's what we're responding to. That was the request. So, to do that, the first step that you took last week was to have the first reading to rescind that language specifically.
Now-
The recommendation is to go back to the discussion tonight, which is the council committee structure responsibilities and operational guidelines. Make your amendment in there. It doesn't have to be in the city code. It's in your policies that you as a council adopt to reflect whatever you think is relevant at the time.
And by doing that, eliminating it in a code, it gives us more flexibility to make policy adjustment changes as time goes on if we were to-
That is correct.
-deem that we want to do something a little different. It's a lot easier to change a policy-
Right.
...than it is going through a code modification.
So, really, by repealing the ordinance and coming back to this discussion tonight, you're exactly right. You have more flexibility. You structure it the way you feel is best today. Two years from now, you might change your mind and say, we need to do this differently, but you can do that as it fits your needs as a council. But it does...I mean, and the question comes in, confirming the mayor's appointment of council committee members, that's in the city code. There isn't a lot of flexibility to it either because it is very specific. Take that out, go back to the policy, and the council gets to adopt that policy in the format that you think is best suited for you.
But...and the only thing we have is if we can't handle it in the committee of the whole meeting, we need some kind of guidance on how do we set up an ad hoc committee to bring back a bigger study report to the council. And I don't...having been on the council, I would not have wanted to set in on every study we've ever done so that at some point we have to set up...if we want to bring citizens in, if we want to have some council members volunteer, but-
Mayor-
What we're saying there is, right now, if we take that all out, what do we do when we need an ad hoc committee?
Mayor, I think each individual situation is going to determine who wants to be involved, who needs to be involved. I don't think we can just make a blanket statement that everybody should be involved.
And that's what we were kind of coming from-
I think you have to look at each-
...on one discussion.
Each individual situation and decide and discuss it amongst us how we think we should best address it.
So the-
Rather than have a blanket policy, I think that's...gets us right back into another mess.
But I think that the purpose of this conversation tonight, I agree with you, look at your operational guidelines as it relates to council committee structure. Let's amend this to reflect, and maybe that's the verbiage you want in there, that committees will be established as necessary.
For the majority vote of the council.
By a majority of the vote of the council, yes. And the council...and again, this is what I heard. The council wants to be the one that sets the committee, not the mayor, and that will give you that flexibility. But I think you have to put it into this document, modify this document that way.
Suzie's writing like crazy.
YouTube's fine.
And that's like Clear Lake. They take what we have for three pages, and they got two sentences. That's all we need. You know, that's a policy. If we need a study committee, ad hoc committee, council sets it up.
But I think you have that flexibility if you want it. But again, the whole purpose of this tonight was to show you what you already have in place and what...where that amendment would take place if you-
Mike, does that make more sense by doing it like that?
We can try it. Nothing ventured, nothing gained.
You got another suggestion, or?
I would stick with my seven people involved in the ad hoc committees. How many ad hoc committees have we had in the six years that I've been on here?
Probably two.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the police and the ordinance is the only two that I can-
Yeah.
...think of at this.
I had one for the airport.
We got a board.
When you talked about the board.
Oh, yeah, we did.
It's nice to have that. It's nice to have that option, though, if you need it. That way, it's there and available.
Right. Now, and the other thing, the council's going to have to trust staff more because there won't be any group of council members if...I'm thinking, for example, the five-year street program. Right now, we're going to have to depend on staff members and Crawford Engineering to bring us a final proposal, and we can say at that point, we like it or don't like it, but in the past, the council has been involved.
How much were we involved in that? I mean, I was on the committee for that. We did...we relied on the engineering firm and the city, you know, working in conjunction with them to identify the streets that were necessary and...
No, I'm just saying that all...we won't have that middle group there to bounce stuff off of, and that's part of the problem became was that there was this delay that three people said that we think that sounds good. It came back here. The other four said, we don't think it sounds good. So then the three went back, and that's kind of the redundancy that doing away with that monthly meeting of a specific group, which is what that was all the idea was.
Democracy, too.
So, the next question will come, what is the language? And we don't have to decide tonight, but you have to be aware that this is the document then that we're amending. What do you want that language to say? Do we take it down to two sentences? Do we...I mean, do you want it to be that general? Are there things in this existing document that you want to save at a future meeting? You'll have to make that determination.
I'd say simpler is better, as long as the council approves.
And that's...I guess I'm asking for direction as to what you want in there. Do you want to keep it as simple as that?
As far as like ad hoc committee?
As far as, you know, any...this really-
Any committee.
Identification and formation of need for a committee would rest with the council.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the council would determine who's going to be on the committee then?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Well, we'll bring that back for consideration. We do have to address the ordinance first. Okay? That sounds good.
Okay. Next item. Is there anything else on that we need to...okay. Snow removal fines. I think this came up with a question on how many snow removal nuisances. It looked like, from my looking at it, that we were pretty normal this year. We had one year, or was it 15? We had one year where was it 15 or 13, 15? That must have been a big snow year or something.
Well, the question was whether or not we were assessing more than one person for snow removal. And this just shows over the last five years who was assessed and, in some cases, how many times they were assessed over the course of the year.
From looking at the list over each year, it appears that we have a real opportunity to do a better job as a city in monitoring it. And I think Todd, maybe being freed up better, would maybe be able to get out there more and find some of these. But I'm kind of with Deb. There's a lot of properties in town that weren't getting shoveled.
Well, and I've seen where they cleaned off one sidewalk, so the timeframe must have been okay to do it, but the neighbors didn't get done and never did get done and, you know? And I don't know how they pick them, if they do it by people just calling in or if you guys drive by and see one, you do it. I don't know. But it just seems like... I think we all know that there's more than two or three or four people in the town of Independence that don't shovel their sidewalk. If you're a walker, you just walk in the street instead.
And, I mean, is it code enforcement and the street department's going to notify? Or do you want council members out there doing it? How do we want to approach it?
Well, I think Todd would say...
Have everyone call me.
If somebody sees it and you have a concern about it, let them know. That's going to be the best.
What's the timeframe? 24 hours?
24 hours after snowfall, but it all depends on temperature and the time of day and everything. I mean, you've got to be lenient on certain things. So... But if it's the same potential violators, that's what we're seeing all the time. They usually catch on with you.
To be fair, you could give them an extra day. And if it still isn't done, then it's a problem.
Well, in that same line of thought, I think probably mowing lawns this summer. We got probably the same questions come up as how come one place gets mowed and the other hides a car in it, you know? So I guess maybe now that you have a little more time on that, you can... When you're chasing those feral cats, Todd, check the grass levels.
I think the issue is if you have a concern, let Todd know.
Yeah.
I think Todd is catching more than we've seen in the past, but I'm not sure that any one person will catch every single thing. So if you see him, notify him.
Okay.
With the address.
With the address, yes.
Not the corner of... That's the wooden Indian.
Okay. Any other comments, questions on this? Okay. And that might be something as far as reporting back to the council that, you know, that might be part of the report, too, that keeps people up to date. Okay. Northeast walking trail along Malone Creek. Kathy?
Yes. Yes.
This is your trail.
Oh. Well, I don't know a whole lot about it, except that I was approached about putting a walking trail in, and I said, "I know nothing about how they're funded. I'm assuming there's some kind of a grant that we would have to look at, and I don't know what the process is."
My question is, for a two-block section, it doesn't seem like much of a trail.
I have not had an opportunity because I've just been super busy to go and look at it, but they did invite me to come and take a look at it.
I'm assuming it's next to that city property, north of our city park property that's unnamed, I think. Is that Frank's Park?
I think that's Overflow Creek.
Overflow Creek. But I went over and looked at it, actually.
Did you?
And I'm going, where are they going to go with this trail?
Right.
And I think it's... I have a hard time dedicating city dollars to a two-block trail.
Well, the challenge, and I went up and I looked, I think that there's an opportunity for a trail in that short stretch. We're missing sidewalks in some of that other area up there, and that's what creates the issue. I think that the trail is a great idea. I think that it's most likely you're going to transition that into sidewalks, but now we run into those neighborhoods that were exempted from putting sidewalks in when they were developed at whatever point and for whatever reason. We're going to have to go back in and create sidewalks in order for this to have a meaningful destination. That would be a bigger concern than... You know, we can... There's grants out there. We can write grants. We can go find funding to put a trail in. And we don't have a good trail system in the northeast. I just don't know where it goes to.
And you're right. We have no sidewalks up there.
Right.
Or very few.
Which creates another issue.
Just make them all put them in.
Well...
Good luck with that.
Yeah, see?
My question would be then, would this first part... Would this first idea be then to develop that whole idea of where this would all go and then do it piecemeal, maybe?
I think that you need a master plan that says, "Here's the goal for what we would like to see there." I think there's an opportunity, if I take you back to our strategic planning, there's an opportunity with a park or open space plan that could address trails, and that could become a part of that concept. And it doesn't have to happen overnight. None of it does. I think it's something that we can work toward, identify it. We have some city property there that could be an impetus for doing it or a starting point to your request.
So we don't have like a whole city plan for walking trails to be all connected together?
Not a comprehensive plan for the whole city. I think what we've looked at to this point is connecting our trail system that we have and then going from there. We do have a bike trail, but a majority of that is on-street or share-the-road bike trail, not a dedicated bike trail, which would be also nice to have for kids. We, you know, I don't know that I want... I would have wanted my kids riding in the street. Riding on a dedicated trail is a much safer place for them. But that's the only thing that would be comprehensive through the entire community as far as, here's a trail plan.
I guess my only other question was, in the city policy, we maintain all of our trails as part of the city. And I would have a hard time sending the Parks Department out there after every snowstorm to clear two blocks worth of trail that may or may not even get used. Plus having to get their equipment out there to do it. It's just...
And it was a tremendous addition when we put the trails in along First Avenue East. My kids used to walk along that little narrow gravel-long First Street to get to school and back. And I think that was the first big thing that was done for that northeast corner of town was to get a trail that kids could safely walk to school at that point. Personally, before I put a trail in in the northeast corner, having lived there for a long time, I'd like to see a city park there. Right now, the closest park is J.C. Park. Then the next one is down by the courthouse, and there's a lot of kids. The farther you get back up into that northeast corner, there's a lot of kids back up in there. But again, for some reason, when we allowed that area to be developed, we didn't require the builder to provide for that. Now, the builder will say he did, but basically gave us swampland for a city park.
And he didn't put sidewalks in either.
Yeah. So it really was not a take, I don't know how many dump loads of dirt, plus the flooding would be worse because we'd fill in a flood plain. But I think that's where, as we go forward with our housing developments, I think we need to take more of those things into consideration. I don't know if you've driven south towards Cedar Rapids lately, but there's a huge housing development getting put together on the west side of 380. What amazed me is they put in a city park already before they've built a house there. And I think those are the kinds of things that the amenities that we forgot over the years is we were so eager to get these housing developments because when we first came to town in the early 70s, everybody bought an old house, tore it down, and built a new house because there were no housing developments. And I think the city was so excited to finally get some that we let some things slide that we probably in hindsight should not have. So I think...
Sidewalks being another one besides parks.
Yeah, right.
You wouldn't have all those issues if you had some sidewalks up there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Everybody walks in the streets because that's where my place was.
And that was kind of a backdoor deal. I can remember that when my dad and my uncles were talking about that in town. When that addition up where you live now was when they bought the land from Frank Bruska. That was one of the things that was supposed to be stipulated, and green lease got by with...
Yeah, we just...
Well, even years before that, though, Terrace Drive doesn't have sidewalks either.
Uh-uh. No.
But we used to have people come up and park in that area because there was no traffic. And it was great walking. Unfortunately, the traffic has picked up so much more up there now that you very seldom see anybody walking because there are so many more cars up there now.
Early in the morning, they still do a lot of walking in that area. But I think I'd like to get back to the whole plan. We don't have a plan for parks. We don't have a plan for trails. Maybe that's something we should look at?
I think you're going to hear more about that very, very soon.
Okay.
There is, again, part of our strategic planning, we talked about green space, open space development, having a plan for that. And we're working on that. I know that Todd has some things of planning and zoning tomorrow morning for a conversation. So that's coming back to council soon.
Oh, okay.
There's a perfect opportunity in my neighborhood to the south of us, 11.6 acres for sale. We could buy that and then put a all... A playground for whatever pseudonym is for handicaptor.
If I'm not mistaken, a lot of the contractors that develop subdivisions are required per city code to build a park and gift it to the city, I believe.
They're not required to build a park. They're required to have a green space donation, if you will, and...
Donate the space.
They're not required to build the park. Steve G. donating the linear park for the trail, if you will, would be an example of that. But we also have the example along Highway 150 North where we were gifted a beautiful retention pond that we get to maintain. So, you know, in the green space, I think we want to be a little bit more deliberate. I think the area you're talking about, Catherine, is also one of those giftings that we receive. Not much we can do with it. I think that we want to be deliberate with what we can do with that space. So back to your green space trails plan, we are in the middle of working on that. We, I think, will have something to bring to you very soon, like I said. But I agree, we need something more comprehensive than what we have.
Well, and that would be nice because if we can't do everything all at once, we at least have a plan we can build off of. And maybe that's just, you know, that piece is one section of a bigger plan of what we have.
Absolutely. And, you know, whether it be a park down in Third Ward, a park up in First Ward, we have needs. And I'm not sure if buying it is the answer. I think that there are some opportunities for people to leave a legacy to the community, too.
Because there's between 60 and 90 kids that ride the bus just from my addition and one to the west of us.
And we do have a park, you know, Triangle Park down there that has an opportunity for some enhancements as well. I mean, we have a lot of these things that could use some enhancement. But I think we want to be strategic about it. I think we want to be deliberate because there's more need than we have money to throw at it today.
Well, we do have a park between Second and Third Street Northeast on Ninth. That is another one that lacks a lot of amenities. It's got a backstop, I think, and that's about it.
Oh, the one down, yeah. Well, it's got some vegetation that people enjoy. That would be Sandberg Hill, right?
No, no, no.
No, no. This is over by Second.
Down by Second, between Second and Third.
Yes.
It's a nice little softball diamond.
Yeah.
But that's about it.
And you can vote on it at certain times of the year, too.
Well, it could be another one of Todd's ponds that he puts in for retention pond.
Well, I think what we're seeing, though, too, is 10, 12 years ago, when we first brought up trails and parks, it kind of like, are you crazy? And now people are seeing the benefits of them and seeing what they're doing. And now we're having those, well, hey, how about us over here, which is good, but they kind of are seeing that they are very beneficial in sidewalks, you know?
It'd be nice to see one that connects everything in town kind of together. I'd really like to see that.
Yeah, right.
I know I always told my kids, especially when they lost their driving privileges, there's nowhere in Independence you can't walk. So I think it would be a good way to...
I appreciate that, and we'll work toward that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Well, there's a lot... Just the trail on Sixth Avenue. Can't believe the traffic going up that, especially after school toward Third Ward Park. And I saw, just on my way up here, I probably saw eight or 10 bicycles going up that. And there were more behind them.
Wait till it gets nice out.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, when we can finish Sixth Avenue and get Enterprise Drive done, you'll have a whole circle of the community you can go.
Well, and they can use the high school ground, too, because I'll take them up that way. Or middle school or whatever.
Nope, those are good things. All right. Moving on here to a less joyful topic.
But equally is challenging.
Highway 150 reconstruction phase two detours.
I'm going to take a stab at this based on some conversations we had today. I know Dave, come on up. He was a part of it, that Brian was a part of this. A couple of things that we're experiencing, that we have taken note of. There was a discussion of extending the stoplight timing up here at the Quick Star Corner. I know that happened a couple of times, and we think that it's gotten to a length now that is meaningful, and we're not seeing as many backups in either direction. And Dave has been watching this pretty closely. We do have a challenge with the north-south streets on the detour because we have a detour sign that encourages people to follow it. And for the most part, they are, just not consistently enough. And it's in large part the semi tractor trailers that are causing us the biggest headache when they go around the detour sign because it gets them into no man's land where there's not a way out for them, and they don't realize that until it's too late. And we're working on a solution that will involve the... Brian scolded us earlier today. The cities saw horses with the two-by-six across it, which is, I call them a Class A. Brian says they're not a Class Anything anymore. But if we can put one of those up instead of those small orange detour signs, we're discussing putting no-through trucks or no-truck traffic. The challenge that we have is we want the trucks to go south on Fourth and north on Fifth, but not the inverse of that. And so how do we put a sign up there that conveys that message appropriately? So we have some signage available to us. We've talked to... Brad has talked to Brian Kailaber, who's looking to see if he might have some truck traffic signs that we can borrow for the summer to help with that. But it's really the semi tractor trailers that are causing us the biggest headache when they don't follow the detour. We do have some folks that are driving through the swimming pool parking lot, and we would just assume they not do that. Dave has got a solution for that, that putting some barricades on the north end of those entrances so they can get in, they can't get back out. And try and train our public before the pool opens.
Why wouldn't we put it on the southwest entrance to that?
Mainly because, so what happens is if I get a truck that goes around the detour sign going southbound, John, they get down there. Once they get to Fifth, they can't turn right. So then they either have to take a right on Sixth, get back to the detour, or the other thing that happens is the semis go through that parking lot. To get them into that parking lot and then get them back out could be more of an issue. I haven't had any trucks coming northbound that go through there. They're all, when they go south.
Okay.
So if you block off that north side, that gives them a chance to go out and around... So if you block off that north side, that gives them a chance to go out and around and get back to the detour. The other problem is it's not truck traffic for the most part through that pool. It's cars that are rolling through that parking lot as fast as they can to try and beat the trucks that are in front of them. So if you put it on the north side, you still have, you, you take care of not pinning the trucks anywhere they can't be. And you're also taking care of teaching people that we're not going to be able to get out there. So next time we won't go that way. And that's, that's the biggest issue there. Ultimately-
This morning I followed two semis and they both went, made that detour in the southwest that John's talking about. Cut through there and then went north by the, and both of them are farmers, different farmers, but both have, you know, they held their grain to Cedar Rapids and then come back and-
And, and the biggest thing is, so Tuesday, when we first started on this, I was out there for about four or five hours consistent and just a pain. So we called Brad, I talked with Brian, we had a meeting, we called Brad. He put up the smaller detour signs out in the middle of the road, hoping that would help us. That helped some. We, we cut down about sixty percent of the people that were just going straight anyway. But then we still had them going out and around. So that's when we started looking at the other solutions. I think, what, we had three, four meetings last week? We've been in constant communication all along, trying to identify the problems as they come up. The solution that we came up with as far as the bigger barricades, that's going to be a wait and see, see what happens. I will tell you, the truck traffic is down from what we were at the start of it. And it's also down drastically from what it was before we started this detour. And that's been the main goal. The two biggest companies that we talked to early, I'd say their traffic is down ninety percent. But all of our people are issuing only warnings, including the cars, because we're trying to get them to, to go along with it too. I think we're having some of the looky-loo traffic, people from the other side of town are trying to figure out, how bad is this detour? And then they become part of the problem. So it'll all, it'll be reevaluated as we go along. But I'll tell you this, each and every person that's down in that southeast section along that detour, either has volunteered their driveway, they've come out and thanked our officers for being there. And we've worked hard in that area to try and show them that we care about them and, and their area. An overwhelming number of texts and either complaints about the detour coming by, or thank you very much for being here, we appreciate it. And those are the people that we care about the most. Because if you're coming from walk-on going to Cedar Rapids, I, I could really care less. It's, they're not paying my salary. It's the people in the southeast that pay my salary. And that's what we're going to do and that's who we're going to be here for.
When are you going to start ticketing them instead of just giving them warnings?
Well, part of the issue is, what we're doing is, we're trying to identify the ways that, and we are able to enforce, okay? Because where the detour sign is, I don't think I'd have a good way to enforce that necessarily through the law, okay? So we're going to put out the bigger barricades and see if that helps us. If that helps us, we'll do that. The problem I have with the cars that don't go on it and that go out and around, they say they're local. I had one from the northwest this morning that did that. Well, is he local? Is he going local? I've had trucks that go out and around it, but yet they're going locally, either to Wopsey Creamery or Spontan Rose or something like that. So they are local, so I'd have a hard time in court trying to do that as well. Ultimately, we want to use the carrot instead of the stick in this situation because we want to look good to everybody that we're trying to help out. We will ticket, but the first week or so, we're going to try and really hard to give warnings out. But I love the idea. I don't think I've ever been in front of council that asked, why aren't you getting more tickets? And I like that, but.
Well, if you can't read the signs.
I, I know. And Deb, I'm right there with you. And it wasted probably ten hours of my time last week where I could have been doing other stuff, but, and my staff as well. But we still have to understand people are creatures of habit. They do exactly as they have done for the last five years. But we're going to, we're going to try and lead them down the path to where they do better. And we've had really positives so far.
You know, like to go into the pool area, there is nothing there that says you can't do it. So, I mean, if you put a sign up there that says do not enter or-
We don't have speed bumps in the pool. We don't have speed bumps in the pool area?
No, and that was one of the suggestions that came out. Once you throw a speed bump down, now you're getting into the point where you remove it or you're damaging the concrete. And then we're also, if it's a permanent one, then we're, are we doing something that's going to be problematic? I think if we do it, and then once the pool gets opening, we need to reevaluate where we're at, what the traffic patterns are doing, and then make decisions based upon summer pool session.
Probably once that parking lot's full, people will quit driving through there because-
And, and like I said-
That's going to slow them down just to get through there because of the cars being there.
Yeah. Brian, Brian and I have worked really hard on this over the last week, gotten together that, and everybody from Crawford Engineering, my people, talks without, the street department.
And those, those roads, when you come down from, you're headed north, and after you get through the three blocks that are actually being worked on, then like Four, Fifth and Sixth says road closed going to one fifty. But it's, it's not.
And the reason, go ahead.
I know you don't want trucks probably there.
Yeah, and we did actually correct that. Those signs are called for, they're called for when that portion of the road gets closed. And so the, the contractor brought those because they're on the plan. Those have now been laid down because it was causing some issues with local businesses. There is local business signage that's included in the plan that the contractor did not bring with him on this first mobilization and the first set of signs that were set up. He was short. Some of the signs that are called for, he has supplemented that since. So, so that, that is one thing that's been changed, Deb.
And in the corner of the pool, there's only, there's one or two ways you have to stop. Would that be better if it was a four-way stop? Because people are coming down heading that way. Oh, I don't have to stop and they zoom around there. And this looks to me like it'd be better if it was a four-way stop.
I think there's a three-way stop there at Fifth and Fifth, I guess it is. It's Fifth and Fifth.
Yeah, it is.
And, and we did, we also did change some of the one-way signage after one of the meetings that we had so that it reads, now it reads one way, do not enter, rather than having the one-way with the arrow. So we've, we've shuffled some of those things around just to make it a little more clear. We've, we've kind of completed our first week of training. I'm not sure if we've got two weeks of traffic training that we're going to go through here or three weeks. Hopefully it won't be more than two. But this is kind of what we saw last year too, you know, the first week. We had a lot of issues, I guess, we'll say maybe confusion or just, just people struggling to follow the signs. Like you said, Deb, they just, they're-
After all, they knew they weren't going to get a ticket and it made no difference up by the railroad tracks, they went on through there and-
Yeah. But I, I can tell you that we've received less feedback, we'll call it, at, at our office than we did last year. I don't know if that's a real good measure of, of how well things are going. But I can tell you, our, our phone has not been ringing as much as, as last year. And I don't know if City Hall, I guess, can echo that or not. I don't know if you guys have had phones ringing. I think the, the fewer calls, I think probably has to do with enforcement and the extra signs that the street department supplemented the, the route with. So I think those things are kind of positive and we're kind of adjusting our fire, as I always say, to, to make things more helpful for the people following the, the detour and also for the businesses and other people who are affected by the detour.
Brian?
Yes?
The DOT prohibits us from suggesting the, if they're coming north on one fifty, to get onto twenty and then take the MHI exit and come back through?
Right. The, the DOT doesn't allow you to close one of their state routes without providing an alternate route through town. So that is the local traffic detour that, that they have approved. And, and the city council set forth in that resolution before we closed the road, that this is the new detour route. The, the global detour was again, in an effort, that was something that the DOT did at their cost to try to take some of the pressure off of the local traffic detour. And then the extra efforts that the police department went to to actually contract, contact some of the heavy carriers to get them to use that if they're really, they really don't have any business being in here other than, in Independence, other than, you know, one fifty goes through, just, just passing through.
I, I just know with, what fuel costs are and everything else on these trucking companies, they're going to go from point A to point B the easiest, fastest way and send them all the way to Winthrop and then back up.
Winthrop, John, one eighty-seven.
Yeah, exactly, one eighty-seven.
They had to stick with state routes. The state global detour had to stick with state routes. So it's Highway three, one eighty-seven, and then twenty over.
That's a big jog.
It, it is. And, you know, the time of getting through town and doing the stop signs and things, they, they have to weigh that decision as to whether they're, they're going to do that or not. But certainly when they're in town going on one fifty, they should be on the detour route. And that's what a lot of the enforcement has been about, is let's follow the signs and-
That's, that's a real goal. And we'd ask everybody, if anybody's listening, we just want them to follow the detour route. It's set up the way it is to accommodate not only the, the vehicle traffic, but also the truck trailer traffic that comes through town. If this is the way they have to come, there, there's a reason for it to be set up this way. You know, Dave and I had a semi come right at us that was going around a detour sign to go against the detour route. It doesn't make sense. Dave did talk to him and he had a logical explanation in his own mind, but it, it's not one that I could make sense of. So I, I think that our, our message is, please just follow the route, have a little bit of compassion because it's a good project. It's going to have great results. We just have to get through this summer.
Are those warning tickets just verbal?
No, they're written. Now, depending on what the officer's doing, if the officer has something that comes up, he doesn't issue the written because it takes extra time. But for the most part, we've been issuing written warnings. And for, for me, for record keeping, so that at the end of the year, you get to see our, our progress and what we're doing, that's where I want it done. And then it also, there's a lot of other reasons for statistical purposes within the police world that we do that. But we're doing written warnings.
If an individual got three or four written warnings, would they maybe get a ticket at some point?
Yes. So that shows up when we run your driving record, those warnings show up. And if it shows that you've gotten a warning from the Independence Police Department, then we know. So it'll show up on that.
Somewhere had a trucking company out there that even if they got warnings, it went against their records.
It does.
So they're not wanting their truckers to do it, so.
The trucking companies, it does go against their safety record because it goes through the DOT and to their safety and their insurance can go up. I think that's part of the other reason you're seeing less traffic is because the trucks, they pass the word that we've been enforcing, I've been given tickets, but we've seen a lot less truck traffic. The other answer to your question, Deb, Fifth and Fourth Southeast, where they're coming up from the old one fifty, that'll cure itself obviously when they tear that up because nobody would be coming around. What that is, is all the traffic that's going down Old One Fifty and we never had a stop sign as you came towards the high school there in the morning. And so that's, that's why that is. But that'll cure itself here in a bit when we tear that road up on Third Avenue Southeast.
But two questions. One is the asphalt that the state put in for the detour down by the, um,
Armory?
Campground?
Yes.
Can we paint a center line on that? You come around that corner and, and I think they all think they're-
You put up a sign to stay in your lane.
Yeah. It's a, it's like a county road there.
I was following a semi that was using the, the bike trail as part of his road as he was going, uh-
I don't know if it's wide enough to be two lanes or if it maybe isn't.
Yeah, it is wide enough to be two lanes. It's kind of like bumper bowling then, we get some bumpers out there for them or, yeah. All those things are possible. We can paint the center line on there. We do have a painting contractor that does the, the permanent painting. You know, we could have them come in, it'd be a small change order for that, that striping unless the city street department wanted to stripe it. But yeah, those are all possibilities.
I wouldn't really want to have anybody out there the way that traffic is trying to paint.
I don't know when you'd go out there and paint it.
Yeah, no kidding.
They're used to that.
I'd want to do it at like three in the morning maybe or something.
That might be the best time.
I know too, on the, the north side of that, where they put that down, there's a large gravel slash dirt area that's gotten really potholed up too. So nobody wants to use that to travel. They're all pushing to the north. Trying to crouch, yeah, crouching the, the asphalt to the point that they're like, I'm not driving my car over there through that. So you're going to wait for me because I'm not getting out of the way, you know, on the north side of that pavement that was put in.
Yeah, and the contractor has been, just as recently as today, doing some additional work there. The street department, in conjunction with the street department, to get some additional millings and things placed in there where some of the larger tractors that, that have decided not to stay on the pavement for whatever reason, they're, they're getting those potholes and things taken care of. So it's, it's going to be, there's going to be maintenance that goes along with it. That maintenance, we accounted for that in the, in the plans with our shoulder rock and temporary surfacing. So they'll continue to maintain that now that they're, they're here. The first week is gone by. And I think they even have staged some additional material out there at the corner so that they can continue to kind of dress that up as problems arise.
I have a second question here is, you do not have to stop now going, when you're going south off the new asphalt onto one fifty by Dairy Queen?
No, because you're not coming back up to that stop sign as an intersection, it's normal. And what we may look at doing with that is we can even bag that for the time being, I suppose.
That'd be nice because we had a discussion on my car that I was running a stop sign and I said, no, that's not a-
Yeah, usually on condition funnel, take it on that.
Sure.
All right. See me after the meeting, Bob.
The other one was somebody wanted to know if we could patch Fourth and Fifth. That that is huge potholes there, that that's one of the reasons they gave me. They don't like to turn there because that, for whatever reason, Fourth and Fifth is really broken up right there on the-
There is a, there is an overlay on that previous concrete street and some of that has come up. So those, those potholes won't get any deeper than the two and a half or three inches that get you back down to the concrete there. But I think the street department has looked at doing some cold patching there. That, some of that may already be done.
I've done my list now, so.
That's it? Is the hourglass up?
Will they tear out that concrete curb?
Uh, which curb are you referring to?
On the, on from Eighth to Seventh. I see they took out the center, you know, the asphalt and stuff and the, and the concrete. But it looks like the, the small curb and gutter section on the outside remains.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah, I don't.
So they removed, removed the asphalt first?
Microphone there, Mark.
Because they have to keep the asphalt and the concrete separate. So the asphalt was removed first, that's what they're just getting finished with. And then they'll go back down to that south end at Eighth and start removing the concrete, including the curb and gutter.
Oh, this is on the project, on the detour.
Right, right. When I saw that, I thought, hey, we're going to get a holding street, aren't we?
Yep. So that's the reason that they had to do it separately.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You just wanted to have Mark talk, didn't you?
That's right, give him a chance.
My, my time was up. He was going to flip it and Mark was going to come up.
So does that make him eligible to drive the red truck then or not?
Perhaps, let's see. Time will tell. Anything else on Highway one fifty to talk about?
No. Well, I'll keep our fingers crossed.
And I have heard a lot of really good comments about what was already done. And we just got to get through this so that we can have that down at the other end. So I think people are aware. So it was kind of nice we did that in first because it's been a little more problematic. But I think people are aware that we'll have a nice end result in the end.
That big picture mentality is going to be important here as the year wears on. So that's good, that's good to hear.
I would tell the council to go back one item. You talked about the number of cars going up into that northeast area with this trail project. I can give you an exact count. On Eleventh Avenue Northeast from Third Street, that whole area, or on, yeah, Eleventh Avenue from Third Street up into that area, four hundred and eighty-four cars over a forty-eight hour period. So we're averaging about ten cars per day that go through there. And the reason I know this is we placed our speed car up there one day. So we do have a good traffic count most recently on that.
Excellent.
Very good.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Brian. All right. Next item is discussion on a commercial restoration rehab application from Trendy Tulip.
I took the liberty of putting this on here to make you aware of it. It is coming to the council for consideration.
Yes, you did, Al. You put this on there.
I had help.
You call it a chewed out.
You had it to where it would just be on the April 11th. I thought, well, we'll just throw it on this one so you guys are aware of it and...
Suzie is really smart. She put it on here so you have this background. They're redoing the front or the west side of their building. They did have a commercial restoration rehab grant. Their total estimate of cost is 15,000. They are eligible for 33% or 5,000, whichever is greater, or whichever is less, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you.
Did you read the note I put on there?
I meant to say less. So they, they have started working on the project, but they submitted this and I wanted to make you aware of it. I think they're doing a nice job fixing up the front there and...
It's gonna make that corner look really good.
Yes. So if you have any questions, it is in compliance with our restoration rehab grant program, so.
Susan showed me proof. She, her name's next to it, so I'd rather get along with her than you.
I understand.
Okay. Moving on here as we deteriorate, council topics. Jim?
I actually have something to talk about. I had a constituent reach out to me who currently lives on Fifth Street Southeast where all the detour is. And he's hoping that, in the future, that his street will be assessed after this is all over with. And then, can you remind me the dates of the burn, when constituents, when we can start burning leaves and that? Do we know? I think it's April, starts in April sometime?
Fire, don't have a fire.
Roger back. Roger's right there. I will find out for you.
Okay, thanks. That's all I had.
Okay. Tom?
All good.
Okay, Deb?
June 11th is our townwide cleanup, right?
That's correct.
From like seven or eight?
Seven to 11.
Seven to 11.
We do have the electronics recycling set up. Waste management has confirmed that they'll be available. The library's working on their shred day, their hours will be a little different. I have not confirmed the tire recycling yet, but we will do that.
How about turniers? Will they be able to come in again too?
They always have been able to. They're always the last one to confirm their availability.
I'm sorry, what did you say, Mike?
Turniers for the metal recycling.
Oh, okay.
They take appliances and metals, they bring the big roll-offs in.
At River's Edge.
At River's Edge, yes. Just to remind the council, we can always use assistance at day. We always have spots for extra hands. The electronics recycling, we do get a better price on that because we provide manpower. And so that does save the city quite a bit on what they would charge us for doing that. We annually invest somewhere between 10 and $14,000 in this half-day event. So it's a big deal to the community.
June 11th?
June 11th.
I won't, my daughter's wedding reception's that day, so I'll...
That'd be a good crew. That'd be a good crew to help with the electronics.
I think most of the big council TVs have to have been...
No. Someone advertised on Facebook today.
Some of those are like 600-pound TVs.
The big ones.
I'll do tires again.
Yes. Okay, um, Deb, fire date, Jeff?
I do.
You do?
I do.
Okay.
Uh, open burning, backyard burning shall only be done April 1st through the 30th in the spring. So you can burn that.
Thank you. You're ready to go, Suzie.
On this weekend, Jeff.
Okay, John?
As Todd mentioned earlier, I do have a Upper Wopsy Pinniken Watershed Authority meeting on next Tuesday. And he's gonna be in attendance to go through some of the suggestions that he has on the stormwater retention. And should be interesting. We'll see how it all goes. We appreciate his input.
All right?
I have nothing at this time.
Mike?
Nope.
Good. Catherine?
I think I brought everything up throughout the meetings.
Okay, Al?
I just wanted to remind you, Todd alluded to the planning and zoning workshop in Waterloo is moved to a week from Thursday to the 14th, from five to eight. Todd, that's five to eight, right? And they do serve you a, a light meal as a part of that. But anybody who's interested in going, please let me know, Suzie, Todd, so we can get you there. It is very informative. It is not the real in-depth planning and zoning education, but it's an excellent overview of planning and zoning and things to watch for and rules that you have, you know, as a council or as a city that we're obligated to maintain.
It is good. I went to the one in Decorah a couple of years ago. So Waterloo's a lot closer than Decorah. So it is, it is a good meeting. Suzie?
Nothing.
Okay, do, staff already talked?
Staff are, they're done.
Okay. I don't have anything, so a meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.